This is a pledge of allegiance. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance? Okay, so the first order of business is we're gonna go over the options for expanding our police service. And we have Captain Hunt here that is going to kinda go over options with Kathy. She's been working on this, I think, with you. And then, uh, there's any questions from the board, you know, addressing Kathy or Captain? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Kathy, do you want to start?
Just, I guess, to refresh everybody's memory a little bit, we asked the county to present to us some options for expanded police services. We did budget additional funds in our 25 budget because we knew this was something we wanted to consider. They came back with, I think, four or five options, and we've had some additional discussion. Last discussion was to add two officers, but I think the hours of which those officers would be providing services was what you wanted to finalize and discuss further. And then the question was raised related to flock cameras, so he's prepared to discuss.
So you'll remember that we provided four options. Option, um, after that, after those discussions, there were some questions about having 24-hour patrols. I put some statistics together. I know you guys are busy, so I don't know if you had a lot of time to look at them. But the short of it is, in the last, in 2024, we only had 39 calls in Dardine Prairie from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. So in my professional opinion, I didn't think it supported the need for 24-hour patrol to have, spend all this money to have an additional officer in the city, um, full-time, uh, from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And the reason I said that is because we have officers in zones surrounding Dardine Prairie through the night. And to be quite honest with you, they, most of them stay in Dardine Prairie right around the Bryan-Fize area or Bryan-Mexico area, um, just because that's the center of Zone 4, 5, and 6 that are off patrol. Um, there was a question about stealing, stealings from vehicles at nighttime. And we only took 28 stealing reports from residential addresses in 2024. I mean, that's great news. Crime is low in Dardine Prairie, so you should be pretty happy about that. So I think the general consensus was not have 24-hour patrol. So Kathy had asked me to put together a couple more, one more option, uh, for two additional officers in the city to work eight hours per day. Their shifts would be staggered. Today, we do 16 hours, uh, in the city. Uh, one officer works, uh, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and the other coverage is from roughly 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Uh, so adding these two officers, and you'll see on your, on your worksheet, um, and these times are not in stone. So if you add two more officers, eight hours a day, um, I, I suggested from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then, um, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Those hours are modifiable, totally modifiable, and we can, we can work. I, I will tell you, I don't, again, I don't see the need for coverage after, full-time coverage after 2:00 a.m. You get the most bang for your buck. Um, but you'll see today, you're paying roughly $380,000 for 16 hours patrol. We had those two hours, um, for those two officers, eight hours a day. In addition to that, that puts you right around $650,000 annually, um, for police services. And then you can also see that's built off of 26 and 27. So adding these two officers, if you guys agree and you want to do this and adding those two officers, there are some equipment costs because you have to, you're gonna have to hire additional officers, outfit the cars, outfit the officers. Um, but those costs go down subsequent years because you don't have to outfit the officer every day, so we already have them on payroll. So that's 36,000 view of, put view of what we're proposing. So I'm happy to answer any questions or take suggestions or...
I think the last discussion was related to the hours in particular, covering some evening, additional evening hours. So I don't know if any, any of the board members want to speak directly to that.
Yeah, I, I had talked to Kathy about this, and I agree. After looking at your statistics, it probably doesn't warrant 24-hour coverage. But I do think that, um, you know, morning coverage is probably, from the 7:00 to 3:00 with the regular guys, probably good. But then to have another one that would come in, um, and cover, uh, a little bit later and then cover till school gets out, which for Osmond is four o'clock, right around four o'clock when the kids start leaving. But then have someone there in the evening, um, again, with the other officer that's already there. Maybe not till 2:00 a.m., midnight maybe. Um, that's when we tend to hear and have the issues around Lewis and Clark is, you know, at those later hours in the evening. And then it was in here from Monday through Friday, our issues run towards the weekends. So, um, I don't know if it has to be Monday through Friday or if it could be Tuesday through Saturday night, whatever it could be. But, um, that to me would more or less fit. It would cover the school safety, and then it would also cover the nuisance piece that we, we're experiencing, so.
Yes, I can't cover school Monday through Friday and then have that officer work Saturday and Sunday.
No, I, I know that, but we have the resource officer, at least at Osmond, that does, is right there and can take that piece away.
Sure.
But, um...
Are you suggesting four to midnight for that afternoon officer?
It could be.
Okay.
I just don't think Monday through Friday picks up the nuisance calls that they could catch.
Is there a way to do the weekends?
Sure, there is ways to do the weekend. I, I will tell you, I mean, this is, this is my problem, this is the city's problem. So, but, uh, you guys go with this. I have to find two officers in the range, hire officers. I would hire officers, place officers in Dardine Prairie. So one of the incentives to do that, um, to offer this up, some of the incentives to have a couple of officers on. Right now, they're only under 12-hour shifts. On our Kelly days, these guys are only working 13 to 14 months. They almost have like firefighters, work full-time, they have like firefighters. Um, so in order to make it appealing for officers to want to do this, want to come into the city and really be motivated to do this without being followed, hold, I gotta have some incentive built in there. Um, I totally agree. Got a couple, it's have, have, I had to start somewhere. So, um, I do agree that some weekends need to be covered. Um, like I said before, we can get creative on the hours. Um, but that's where I'm coming from in the stance of the, of the weekend. You gotta give guys some weekends off so that, uh, they're incentivized to, to put in. That make sense?
I don't understand, just coming to Dardine Prairie is an incentive for them right there, you know?
Not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot going on. A lot of these guys like to chase bad guys all night long and, uh, so, yeah. And, and there's a heavy emphasis, I mean, because there's not a whole lot of crime, the officers take the time to actually patrol, to, 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 right in particular. So, um, not all my officers like writing tickets, they're being drafted up. So really have to find the right person to contract the police. We have people to do that, the officers we have. I suspect the officers that are doing it now, full-time, on our, on our shift, may put in for this, especially if they know that they got a eight-hour schedule and not 12 hours.
Question that's in a little bit of a different direction. Less than, less officers, more resources, especially to cover those nighttime hours. Uh, I am aware that you guys use block cameras in certain areas of your police operations. Uh, but I wanted to know if there was any way we could incorporate those camera, block camera usage to get some kind of, uh, coverage during those night hours? Because I think those are, we've seen a lot of success around here with those at night, kind of just watching for stolen vehicles and alerting the officers that are in the area. Uh, so, you know, with our package in Dardine Prairie as we're pushing this forward, is there a way to incorporate block camera coverage, or specifically for Dardine Prairie?
Yeah, we're not stopping cities or businesses or subdivisions from purchasing block cameras. Police Department doesn't purchase those. Uh, the only entity of county government that has is Parks Department in our county parks, uh, which one of those in parks here in Dardine Prairie, uh, you can activate for. Um, you have six cameras right now in the city that are fed to our regional intelligence and information center. We have full-time officers. It's also connected to our dispatch center where dispatch gets alerted. So the more cameras you have, the more we'll connect to our dispatch and then we'll call the RIC, the Intelligence and Information Center. So if you got a camera, we'll, we'll...
Separate from this, Dardine Prairie can invest in block cameras and then interlace.
Absolutely. As soon, if you contract with block to come put cameras up, um, as soon as they're installed, we will interface with them immediately.
Wait, Keith, we, we had discussed this a couple of years back and...
Yeah, no, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but I just...
We did the research and, and with O'Fallon, it has a lot of block cameras. Basically, all the cities had everything coming in and out of our city. So it, it was, wasn't feasible for us to purchase in flock when all the other cities cover our city, coming in and out.
Right, and most major intersections in the city have, have LPRs on them too. That, we're not, it's not Big Brother, we're tracking stolen, stolen cars. We had a pursuit the other day, we were able to track that pursuit on the cameras. You know, and that, that keeps everybody safe. Like guys driving like a wild man, we can back off, see where he's going. Um, so it's, they're very helpful. The, the only challenge, and I don't say it's a challenge because it's a good resource, but block is a delay notification, unlike our LPRs, which are immediate. Uh, block will replay, run it, they'll hit, and then it sends notification to our dispatch. Usually a 30 to 60-second delay in that, and then the information's kind of radioed out to everybody. So a lot of times by the time it's hit the, you get them going in a subdivision, get them going in a business, that's great. Get them going out, probably lost the car, it's hard to track, it could time, time.
Yeah, last year, though, vehicle that perpetrated the staff sample home breaking is Barrett Haven, February 24th, if I remember correctly. That went on to Fallon, which is a suspicious vehicle. These officers had identified stolen vehicle, they executed a traffic stop.
It's an unbelievable tool. It's a game changer for us.
Yeah, so it does work, and, you know, that was part of Barrett Haven that, last year, that, that, or three. We had those issues, but have we had those in the area?
For sure.
Well, I'm sorry. Um, when in regards to how Dardine Prairie is growing, um, do you think this would be sufficient for what we are growing to? We can't grow as a larger size, but we are going in homes or in, um, some development. Is this a, to, in your eyes, is having two officers feasible?
Yeah, well, yeah, I do. I don't think you can, I guess you can over, you know, staff a department or a city. Um, but I, I don't think having three officers in the city at one time is too much. Um, in fact, I think it really helps with your city identity too. Um, because residents will, the more they see cars, the more they're gonna realize they have a police department. You know, it's the county police, they have a police department. But you have a lot of residents, I know it's a fact, if people live in Dardine Prairie, think they live in O'Fallon because they have an O'Fallon zip code. Um, and they think the O'Fallon Police Department is their department. Um, so the short answer is, no, I don't think it's too much. It's adequate. We're actually doing a staffing study right now at the county police department, uh, to determine if we have enough officers too. So, um, I think that's, once we get through that, I, I think we can offer that service to you guys to, um, have our professional standards, do a staffing study, police service staffing study. That probably, realistically, probably... And I, the chief will kill me, I, we'll do that for free for you, so.
Thank you even more.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is we have an option here, and I don't know if he has those options or not, but we got an option for, for adding two additional police officers, eight hours a day, 40 hours a week. But up at the top, it talks about Monday through Friday with set hours. I mean, if we go with that option, will we be able to kind of tailor those hours a little? Like, maybe like we said, the weekend, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so as the Bureau Commander of the Patrol Division, I'm constantly looking at, are we staffing at the right time, on the right days? Um, so, yes, this is fluid and flexible. As long as I can give my guys enough notice and ask them to discuss this so much if they don't get family time. Uh, yeah, that is fluid and flexible, and all it takes is a phone call to say, hey, we think we need to change this up, we'll look at it, we definitely look at the city to change those hours.
And I think we'd be very flexible if, if you're looking at those things as, as what's going on, to call us and say, hey, look, it's better if we shift an officer these hours because we had more incidents going and stuff like that. And as you said, uh, the notoriety of, of having a police car with Dardine Prairie on it, that's one of the weekend, the things a weekend would accomplish for us too, is more people are home during the weekend. When they see a Dardine Prairie car, they, they do like that. It makes them feel safer.
I, I agree. I totally agree. Um, to your point, our cars, I mean, city should demand more city identity. Do, sorry, talk about that and work through that.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
I, I think, to your point, though, we had that issue in that subset. What I did is I pulled my traffic, heard the whole county would deal with the issue. It's other than those kids that we were talking about. That instance, at this, I'd flex those officer hours, I'd put them on that. Hey, the other, the other thing you're gonna get is you're gonna get the same, if you have an eight-hour officer and you have somebody that's here from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 or 7:00 a.m. to 3:00, my, my goal is to make that officer really the liaison to the city. Comes in here every single day, gets to know the staff, gets to know you guys, comes to the city, God, it's... Um, is that face, I mean, everybody remembers DJ that was here. And everybody just nod their head. That's my goal. It's hard to find a DJ. Um, he was great. Um, but that is my goal, to find somebody like that that is really here, that's the face of Dardine Prairie, you guys, the police department, and a liaison and get that information back a lot quicker than, you know, you guys can get it back to here and have it.
You know, the other thing is, I, I am confident with you having other officers in the area when we don't have somebody dedicated here. I mean, I have never seen an issue or heard of an issue where somebody didn't get police when they needed them.
But if I called right now and four officers, they'd all be...
And I, I, I applaud you for that now.
Um, I will say, we proposed three years. Um, you know, if we, if we do that, do two, two officers, I'd say, uh, you're two, you're like, we're just not seeing the benefit of this, we're not seeing the benefit of this. Always go back, trying to...
That's fantastic.
If county police can't do that in the county, without, without, you guys have the ability to tailor make this to however, however you want.
Well, that means you can't leave for a couple of years.
I'm not going anywhere, I don't, I don't think. I've never said no to...
I'll call Kurt and tell him you can't go anywhere.
So, to get to this point, first, I thank you so much.
You bet.
Before I make a motion, I wanted to just also, now we've talked exclusively about options four. Um, anybody have any other options?
I looked through them all pretty well, and it seems like my biggest concern was the flexibility of working with them, making sure maybe coming some weekends and stuff like that. So that's where I go.
Okay, and then Carla's expressed her on that too, so I think we've revolved that. Uh, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to...
I'm calling this option six, just for everybody to be...
Option six?
Option six. It separates from option four, so it's similar to option four, but it's a little bit different. So just, if you say option four to me, I'm going back to the early option four, I'm calling this option six.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we want to have the city, uh, administrator...
Put an ordinance for option six. We got a motion by Keith, we got a second by Carla, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That did...
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I look forward to hearing from you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business is consideration to a revision to B.2 in the city code, section 110.195. Uh, Keith, Carla?
Yeah, so I think we requested some wording from the last meeting. Um, requested that wording modified. Actually, I think that...
Work on it, Keith? Keith? Yeah, it's in the pack.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're okay with that. I don't know. Further discussion. I don't have any that covered in the last several meetings, comfortable with it.
Okay, so we're gonna go with, uh, what we, the current wording that we have?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I still gonna stand behind, you know, I don't see this thing bringing any benefit, um, to us. I think it was a waste of money on the attorney part and everything else because everything brought before this board is brought before the board in the work session first. So this, I, I don't think, I don't see this accomplishing anything that's already done in the work session.
So... Does the board want to go forward with this? Carla?
Um, yeah, I think we should. I mean, yes, everything is brought up in the work session, but before it gets to the work session, an RBA is done, and, um, I don't think that, you know, we should do, um, RBAs on, on another ward without that ward being informed. So, you know, you can say it's brought up in a work session all you want, but that doesn't mean that the person in that ward knows about it until it gets into the paperwork and you see it in your packet. So...
Let you say hypothetically, in a situation where both two ward members are not available, and something comes up that is of some kind of urgency.
That's a different story.
Well, then how is that addressed in there? It's not, it's saying that they, one or both should be, uh, known before an RBA goes far.
Wow. It doesn't say it says any two member.
Well, what does it say as far as addressing the, the alderman of the ward that it's in?
Well, I guess if that...
Because if it says any two members, then we're back to what Mark's saying.
If that was the case, then I would bring it to you because you have the option to do the RBA. So, um, you know, I mean, that to me gives you the option then to choose to do the RBA or if it's that much of an emergency and it has to be done and can't wait, then you do it. So...
Isn't all we're asking here for some transparency? I don't see why the brouhaha.
There, there's always been transparency. Everything is brought before the board. Just because you do an RBA doesn't mean anything has done, been done because nothing, nothing can go forward without this board approval. So, you know, I mean, you can put it in there, I just think it's redundant, uh, you know? And as you read this thing, it says, uh, it's requested, it's made by a member of the alderman not from the affected ward, both aldermen and affected ward must be notified. Well, they are notified in, in the work session. This doesn't say they have to be notified before then. Doesn't say anything about that. Notified one day, six days, the board meeting.
Time of the placement on the agenda, so, place of the, yeah, for the meeting. They tried to put the RBA and, before the meeting, the aldermen are notified of that.
That's fine.
So it gives a little bit more of a stretch for them, the alderman of that affected ward to get ahead of whatever issue placed by aldermen from another ward. I think, once again, this goes back to the same reason why we changed initially two years ago. When I first came onto the board, we went from meeting everything twice in one meeting, uh, very substantial issue ordinances, one reading per meeting, let's just demonstrate. And then last year, we went from having one alderman going, putting something on the agenda to having requiring two. So it's just another additional check and balance forward, kind of perfect process of the RBA in this city. Laura's point, it brings transparency, it also gives a little more time to affect the aldermen that are to get ahead of some...
Okay, so we'll prepare an ordinance for, uh, change to code?
Motion for change to provision to B.2 in the city code, section 110.195, uh, ordinance with the wording and packet.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, motion approved, forward. Uh, okay, moving on, Cedarstone Commercial. TriStar Properties, got a, Matt Siegel? Gonna address the board on the, uh, the Cedarstone Project?
Yep. Yes, you guys see in your monitors, good?
Okay.
Uh, Matt Siegel with TriStar Properties, uh, here to address you on, um, Cedarstone Project. Um, some, most of you are familiar faces, some, uh, new aldermen since, uh, we started this process probably two-plus years ago. Um, I'll just go through the project really quickly, uh, for those that are new, but also some of you might have seen it when you were on Planning Commission and kind of give it real quick, once over. And, um, then I'll discuss, uh, towns for vision committee process that it went through, and then Q and A and go on our way. Um, the, the ultimate goal tonight of having this is, um, just, when we talk about transparency, I met with, um, the alderman for Ward One and Ms. Pratt and Mayor, um, a week ago or so, plus or minus, um, to kind of dust off the project since the vision, uh, report was complete. And so that's why we're in front of you tonight. As you know, it's been tabled for well over a year, I believe. Uh, so, uh, yeah, uh, so, those familiar, Technology Post Road, we brought a project in for you, uh, for you as one mixed-use development that had 44 single-family lots on the rear, um, approximately four and a half acres. Next slide, I'll, I'll talk to you, I'll go with you in time. Uh, that's a single-family subdivision, uh, that was brought forth years and years ago by Paint Family Homes that ultimately, uh, was approved, but then, um, was never built. Uh, this is a project that we brought forth to you, 44 single-family lots, uh, four and a half plus or minus acres of, uh, commercial, up to, uh, 30,000 square feet of commercial space. Um, and then, uh, 200, uh, plus or minus units of, uh, multifamily development, um, 220, I'm sorry, multifamily, uh, units of, uh, development. Uh, this was brought forth unanimously approved by Planning Commission, probably two, two years ago, then brought forth to the con... then brought forth to console. Console put a pause on it and ordered to do the vision report. Obviously, it took a long time to even get the vision committee together and then to do it. So it's been sitting here for a long time. In the middle of the vision committee process, we came back and forth in front of console. Probably, if I look, about half of you were up here at the time, plus or minus. And with your support, which we very much appreciated, we kind of broke the project into two phases. Single family in the back, and then the front 10 plus or minus acres up front were what was, ended up being tabled. You approved the 44 lot, single-family development called Cedarstone that you see now in front of you with about five plus or minus houses that have been developed. Keep going. Examples of the homes that were approved, consistent, Consort is the builder of the homes. Doing well, new housing stock. It's actually, as we all know, we have a high housing crisis really in America right now with lack of supply, people looking for homes, guarding, as we all know, is a desirable area. Homes selling doing well, even in a high interest rate, high construction cost, high cost environment for homes. So win-win. Commercial design, real quick. 30,000 square feet is what we're asking for. It could be one building of 30,000 square feet, or what's more probable is the seller actually is also a real estate investor and their trust wants to do probably one 10,000 square foot building, and then another 10,000 square foot building, another 10,000 square foot building. As discussed with you at the time, they are the owner of the Wing Haven Shops right up the street. So they, this is not an easy site for commercials, we've discussed before, but being that they own the shops right up the street, they have a really keen sense on the supply-demand, and they know that they have a demand issue for tenants in this market. And so that's what they intend to put here. Neighborhood shops, more on the neighborhood scale, whether specialty grocer, health club, it talks about, we've talked about in the past, professional services could be in there as well. But there's a high propensity and probability, could have neighborhood, small restaurants type of use as well. But, you know, high probability there'll be some retail sales tax kicking off from that center. This is a example of what a layout could look like for three 10,000 square foot buildings. Commercial inspiration, give you some idea of what... In general, we worked with, somewhere, their architect would make the shops probably have a similar facade to what the apartments would be. So it was a modern farmhouse type of look. So it would all be cohesive and look as one development together. Proposed multifamily, at the time, what we brought in front of you was five separate buildings, all uniquely designed as it relates to, different than what you have already approved within the guarding proper community. The idea was you have a green space, a green belt going down the middle. That's what it would look like from unit to unit, which we would, you know, passively amenitize areas for congregating, landscaping, such down the middle. And from one end to the other end, you... Trail all the way, and we put, we have a pickleball court there, but we'd like to discuss with the Ward One alderman. You know, we'd vary up from just putting it as a dog park, just, you know, our tenants can relate perfectly to that. And it creates a sense of community, and it's a good area as far as for people to congregate. Elevations definitely step up from some of what you approved previously in the area, and definitely consistent with the vision committee package that has been put forth through the City and Planning Commission. So with that, I will, I'll just relate to the, I just want to, I know a little bit, but the vision committee in general, I highlighted some pages. I know you all looked at it before it was adopted, but I think it's really important just to point out real quickly. You know, the vision committee divided up the area into Zone One and Zone Two in your report. This area falls in Zone One. The uses themselves were adopted within the report identically to what we proposed. So you already have the yellow in the vision report that represents the single-family. Orange, the orange bubble represents multifamily, and the pink circle represents the retail. Page 31 in your report talks about the future land use plan and adopts those uses to a T. Page 36 talks about architectural and multifamily precedent. I, with a high degree of confidence, can say we are exceeding the example that is in the vision report as far as architecture and creative design within our community as well, of course. And then you get to page 44, which gives a PGAV, kind of the scale of an aerial of what the vision, what the vision plan would look like on a scale with the site plan of all the uses. And I don't think it's a coincidence that it's our plan that's on that in the report. So that's page 44. And then you get to, I think it's important, page 49, they did an economic analysis for how the vision committee's plan would all work and how it would drive rooftops, drive your sales tax base. Without a doubt, this is the biggest key component to, for you to, the city to hit that $750,000 number that's talked about in this report. These rooftops, that we've already got the 44, but the 200-plus residents that we would put forth, including also the sales tax that would generate retail space, it's a key component to, call it bubble number, area number one of the report. I think, you know, without a doubt, it's the key component to make it all happen. So with that, you know, really, from our discussions in our, in our meeting we had a week or so ago, you know, we want to do the project. We've been very, very, very patient. As I told Mr. Wilson, Steppmeyer, it was, you know, having the meeting with him was a breath of fresh air. It just felt good as far as, hey, you know, it feels like we're a little more welcomed. We were patient. And in general, we're excited about the project, excited to bring something of quality here. The uniqueness of where we're at right now, as far as with the city council being down one member right now, and, you know, us being tabled. So, you know, we don't want to go forward without, you know, some level of, of, hey, we're ready for you to come forward, because you need four votes in order to pass the ordinance. So that only allows one person to dissent on the project. So we're just being very open and transparent that we've been patient. If you're ready for us to go forward, we're ready to go forward. So with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Do you have any commercial interest or two shops coming in? And one time you talked about that Jim was really interested.
I'll let him talk about it.
Hi, Chris Wagner, part of the trust that owns the property. And as we've said before in some of these meetings, we'll, as Matt just said, we own the shops just up the street. And so we're 100% occupied right now. The reality of it is, is that we wouldn't have been on this cause. We're pretty close to have the commercial, at least the first building built. And, you know, we've got, we've turned away some retail sales. Indian Grocery, that's in our shops up the street, actually wanted a little bit more space. We didn't have it at the time, so they went and moved in. We would have put them up here. We've also turned away some other, some other potential tenants, just because we don't have the space. So time, timing's important. And so Steve, in fact, represents us from a sales and leasing standpoint. So we, we get three to five hits every month, some interest coming into the shops. Some of that, most of that's just because of the location, but we'll be able to turn that up. So we've got to restart that now, because honestly, we've been tabled. And so, you know, we own other properties, we've got a lot of other stuff going on. We have put a tremendous amount of effort in it. We didn't know when we were going to be back in front of you guys. And so to answer the question, we get interest every month, and we can start with some of that. There might be a couple of tenants, like potentially the Indian Grocery, that as they're growing out of their space, will move them up here and put somebody else in there. And we'll just see as, as the traffic's coming on the month.
Other thing I had is, and I don't know if, I was on board when we split the whole thing up, because I wanted it all to go together, is I threw interest out and to end of the apartments and the end of the subdivision about their common ground there to make that more of a park-like setting that, you know, the residents can use and stuff there. But I don't know where we went. I know it got...
Um, so... Kind of...
Right here.
Well, what part?
Of where the...
Okay, so we would, that's where we would put the dog park.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't...
Dog park with probably, you know, benches, definitely some area.
How big area is that? I can't remember.
Uh, well, that whole area is like acres.
Your 8 acres, so that remains flat up to now, uh, first, four acres, did that take?
Five.
We're gonna retain 5.8 feet of it, TriStar.
So call that acre, acre and a half.
That'd be a good sized place for a park.
Yeah, that would be our intention, to create a passive green space for dog park gathering, things like that.
Always looking...
You do have, you definitely have a little topo there, but there's, you can find enough flat spot.
I don't know if you remember, but originally I talked about it, adding up for the walkway through subdivision to get to there.
So the subdivision technically from a HOA and indenture standpoint, because we did break it apart, they don't have, they don't have a right to. Now, in reality, someone wants to come down and, you know, use the dog park. No one stopped, but that's their, their separate project.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, but I mean, we... Yeah, but I mean, we, and one of the things that Mr. Wilson brought up, which isn't depicted, would be, you know, some level of screening and landscaping between the residential lots and multifamily, which we would do, probably like vinyl type fence, pretty keen for, with giant screen, our providers, often up there.
I'm in favor of it, I was in favor of it before. Start to what we wanted to develop down, it's hard to work. Prospects growing, other businesses. That's just my two cents.
Okay, so in the light of times, we can move forward. Can I see, can I get a show of hands?
Can I, can I just put a couple of questions? I know we're pressed for time, but some of the stuff we discussed. So the other aldermen know about it. You said no, you weren't going to put carports or garages, right?
No intention.
No intention of that, okay. And that...
If I, I maybe would do, if I may would do garages, but if I did garages, I would have a requirement within my indenture that they not be restored, have this sort of car.
Real quick on that though, if you put garages, would you lose parking spaces?
Well, so I, so here's, here's another thing. As a developer, I can tell you, I'm shooting for around 1.6 to 1.75 for my ratio of parking. I do not and will not... So if, if I, I would err towards more parking spaces if I'm going to compromise by putting garages. I would not do that if I do not have enough parking to keep that strong rate.
We all know, some people keep garages and they don't use it, now you're...
I, I understand, yeah, understand. I mean, right here, we're not showing any garages.
Our port's on, all in favor.
I just have a couple more. I know we're pressed for time. As you're aware, apartments are not necessary. But in this particular case, where apartments act as a buffer to a major highway, which is... That should be a sound barrier to those, to the single family, and to your knowledge, back from the single family. Residents there?
None. I mean, as discussed, if it was one project, it was, there was a request at the time for a, for the, at the single-family home sales, for them to have a storyboard or something of acknowledgement that you will have retail apartments built behind you, but there's nothing to mention disclosed, because nothing was approved. But... Correct.
Finish, Laura? Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, I'd like to have a show of hands of who or what aldermen are willing to let this go forward.
Let it go forward. I mean, formally vote to approve that.
That's right.
I guess can you be a little more clear on what you're grasping?
Okay, so I entertain a motion to take this off the table and put it on the regular session to have a first reading at our next meeting.
I'm with.
March 5th, March 5th, okay?
I'm with.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, hear none. We will put it on the March 5th meeting for a first reading.
Just one reading. Clarification, it's one reading, and if things aren't looking good, we can get tabled. There's, I shouldn't be penalized because you're down an alderman and I can't get, I need four votes.
Yeah, so go to one meeting, and at that point, we can get tabled, but we can also move to approve at the second reading.
We can approve, or we can, you know, ask for a second reading. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't kill it. You can come back.
Mayor, if I may, last time you all were here, we had different procedures. This is now the new procedure where we do one reading, one...
I understand. I, I, I understand. I just, I'm, you know, normally you have six aldermen. Four for an ordinance to pass. So being that we don't have that, I have to run a risk profile of, it's, you know, am I going to be okay? Otherwise, I'm fine sitting on a table.
I don't think you heard any arguments up here.
Okay.
Or to me, I'm just, I, I...
I understand, and I, and I, I'm in your affairs, and I know, I understand. I'm not asking for yes votes. I'm asking for, you know, it's just a little different because you're down an alderman.
I, I would be concerned too, if you had somebody sitting up here saying, no, there's no way I want it.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Clarification for you. You had an unanimous decision to place it back on the agenda.
Oh, that's... That says something in itself.
If you wanted to postpone it, hopefully they would have left it tabled.
I understand, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Grant application summary, Kathy.
Thank you, and I just want to express appreciation to the board for their patience. Wise Design Group has been working fast and furiously, coming down to a deadline of February 7th and getting these road board applications submitted. And we've had two changes since the packets went originally. So the revised versions are in your packet now. And just to call attention to those changes to you. So specifically, ordinance bill number 2508, which is this Weldon Spring Road project. five oh eight, which is this Weldon Spring Road project. The total cost for the project is now two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. The city's cost share is a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. The federal application is two million, ninety-one, four oh one, sixty-seven. And the application fee changed from sixty-seven, fifty to ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven. So it's an increase in the project costs. But the, the city is, is, cost share actually went down less, more than fifty percent. We also have a change to bill number twenty five oh nine, which is the Safe Roads to Schools project. There, the city's cost share is decreasing from a hundred and sixteen, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand and eleven cents to fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. And there were no other changes to that ordinance.
Hey, any questions? All right, moving forward, sponsorship of the EDC. Oh, no, change in term of office for Board of Aldermen. Carla, Keith, Ryan, under an RBA, I think you want to talk about going from two to four, put it on ballot.
Well.
The three?
It has to go to either two or four. It can't go to three. So.
Yeah, we're a class four city.
Right.
So this is just my suggestion. I think you just ought to wait or be tabled until we have a full board. After the election come April, I mean, I think you should bring it up then and have a full board to vote on it.
That's fine. I mean, the, the reason for doing it was to try to get it passed for the coming election. But I understand that.
To go to vote.
Well, um.
Okay. All right.
What I'm saying is, I didn't, I didn't understand that portion of it.
Okay.
So therefore, now that I have that information, I, I agree with you. We can just table it and bring it up because if we won't really, you know, be able to put it on a ballot until a ballot for twenty twenty-six, I believe. Unless we decide to go ahead and put it on a ballot if there's something in August or November. I know it's more costly, but I guess my question is, I didn't, didn't quite understand the language in the ordinance. Rather, once it's passed, is it that election that the people, the new elected people then become the extended term if that's what passes?
No, it'll be the next, the following election.
So it would be the people running in twenty twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay. Just so people understand the reason I think that this is important because I think it extends the terms of an alderman. You know, right now, I'm not quite in my first, into my first year, but I've already in six months or so got to start thinking about the running again. And it's just disruptive, I think, to the flow of the city government. And I think it would be much better to have it for longer terms where you continually to, you know, think about the daily city business and not have to begin to think about running a campaign.
Okay, so entertain a motion to table it until after the election. First meeting and.
Second.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? Here none. We're going to table item number five. Okay, sponsorship for the EDC Holiday Celebration. Okay, Keith, or not Keith, it's Ryan and Mark.
Correct. The Holiday Celebration is in Darding Prairie at the Community College, and it's a five hundred dollar sponsorship. And I want to do my best to make sure individuals know that Darding Prairie is behind it. And it showcases all the different entities that donate. And I think this is a good look for the city. So it's five hundred dollars what I'm looking to.
So to what extent were you thinking of sponsoring to just advertisement and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Entertain a motion for. Any questions?
No, we've never done that.
And, and it's always been here in the coverage and, oh, it's right here in our city. We should have our name on it.
Okay, I entertain a motion to sponsor the EDC Holiday Celebration by Darden Prairie. Should we put a, a limit on how much to spend?
Five hundred.
That's it. Okay. Okay. Got a motion by Keith to support that? Second by Mark. All in favor? Okay, here none. Sponsor the Next item, review of accident data at Bryan Road and Fizey Road.
Yes. Did that data come getting?
Did you get some data from the police?
Okay, okay. Did everybody get to see the data for, okay. So the main thing is, going to corner of Fizey, what, Fizey and Bryan Cross Road, there is an accidents, eighty-five or so accidents recently. But it is a problem. I would like to ask Kathy to see if the city could let, either our engineer or talk about what we could possibly do, or even our lawyers of what we could possibly do for that area. Right now, I'm just suggesting like a, individuals coming out of the Quick Trip is like a no left turn. But that's just my suggestion. But I would like the city to figure out what we can do, less than the accidents in that area.
At one time, wasn't that proposed?
It was. It was proposed. I think Carla brought that up. And I don't know, John, can you clarify that? I think you said something about there was some kind of agreement with Quick Trip as far as the traffic flow? No, or someone did, I thought.
I don't recall that, but we can start.
Okay. So we'll have John look into that and see if there's any issues. And we'll, we'll bring it back.
Oh, real quick, before John looks into it, can we just see if what our engineer could possibly look into before our lawyer looks into it? Is that possible? Or does it, well, just?
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Oh, okay.
Anything we do would have to be approved by O'Fallon then, right? Yeah. Yep. Okay, yeah. Get with O'Fallon. Okay. Yeah. Yep. Right.
And this was brought to us by a resident whose wife had been in an accident and said it would seem like it was a real problematic area. So.
When we were standing out there with coffee with the cops in an accident. Eyewitness. It's our number one vendor vendor.
Thank you.
Okay. Review of the Board of Aldermen agenda. Any, any questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move staff communications to the regular meeting. The regular meeting should go kind of quick so we can spend a little more time. We need to do staff communications.
I, I think staff communications is usually after the agenda items. So I do have one comment to make on one of these.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, man.
Sorry. So bill twenty-five eleven on your agenda is for the purchase of a sixty-one inch deck mower. The board approved thirteen thousand as a line item in our twenty twenty-five budget specifically for this deck mower. Staff priced and reviewed three options, a Toro, a Scag, and a Ferris. And the recommendation is to purchase the Scag through cooperative purchase for not to exceed amount of thirteen K. This mower will meet the demands of right away mowing and is expected to last fifteen or twenty years with proper maintenance.
That had to do. All right. You're fine. Anybody else have anything to say about the agenda? Okay. Uh, we have no closed session. Entertained a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none. The work session is adjourned. We're going to take five minutes and come back and get started on the regular meeting.